Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge is absent. Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Montano?
Here.
Councilmember Galen?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
So, we're going to start off tonight's meeting with discussion on the Community Facilities District Financing. Mike, do you want to do a brief introduction?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Now, you better put that mic pretty close.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, tonight, we're here to talk about the CFDs more as an educational piece to bring up to speed the new council members, and I should just say new council member because one of them does know CFDs already. And then also as a refresher course for the other council members, as it's been a couple of years since we've actually had this presentation. So, as you know, the Town Council sits as the District Board, Board Members, and which is a separate entity from the Town. And the CFDs, which stands for Community Facilities District, are two units that were organized in Merrill Ranch Anthem pursuant to state statute. So, as you know, the CFDs, they're to install the public improvements, and the financing mechanism for those public improvements is debt, which includes general obligation bonds and special assessment lien bonds. The general obligation bonds are for more of the regional improvements that go into the CFDs, and the assessment bonds are more for the local neighborhood improvements that go in. So, with that, that's just a really quick overview of CFDs. And tonight here is Mark Reader from Stiefel Nicholas, who serves as the underwriter for when we issue the debt, and also Michael Cafiso and Paul Gales from Greenberg Traurig, who represent our bond council. With that, Mark Reader is going to do a little bit more thorough presentation on CFDs, and I'll turn it over to Mark.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Farina, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Good evening. As mentioned, Mark Reader was Stiefel, and had the opportunity, I think, as you all know, to work with the Town for many, many years, including the initial formation of this district, I think back in 2005, and we've also had the privilege of working with the Town on your traditional bond transactions for other things as well. So, we thank you for inviting us down. We're here this evening to educate. I want to say that we had this same presentation about two years ago, if you remember. I know we have one new council member, Mr. Anderson, and I know, of course, Ms. Galen was the Finance Director. So, some of this is going to be a repeat, apologize for, but maybe to give you kind of a reminder, and we're here really to slow things down and just educate you on the CFDs and the two types of bond issues that are issued within the CFD boundaries generally every year, it seems, and to answer really all of your questions. So, that's really where I laid out kind of the goals, was just really to educate and inform. Number three there, we talk about the two different types of bond transactions within the CFDs, which I'm going to kind of start off with right off the bat. General obligation bonds are issued. General obligation bonds are bonds payable by property taxes, secured by property taxes, and generally used for regional public infrastructure. Okay? On your tax bill, just like your school taxes, just like your community college taxes, and payable twice a year by people that live within the boundaries of the district. The other bond that we issue is the special assessment bonds. Those are bonds that are issued primarily for the entrac public infrastructure, roads, streets, curb, gutter, water, wastewater, and the entracs. Okay? And the Town has a policy whereby each lot has a $3,500 per lot assessment, as you know. And so, Pulte has asked us over the years to phase the issuance of the special assessment bonds based on development progress and kind of where they're going each year. So, we don't do large transactions, at least we haven't for quite some time. They're asking us to, as they phase the project, to issue some bonds in connection therewith for the entrac. The rest of it's just a little bit of background on us, which you're familiar with. I threw this in here this time, just as kind of a reminder. This is the life cycle of a master planned community. And Merrill Ranch is in various stages right now. The pre-development stage is pretty much over, done back in 2005, as you know, maybe even 2004 during the creation, and the vision of the community, working with the Town, getting entitlements, permitting, et cetera. So, and then it transitions into infrastructure improvements. A lot of that has been done, a lot of money in the ground out there. Pulte very much obviously invested in the project, and development occurring as well. So, this is kind of gives you kind of a life cycle of the development. I think if Pulte were here, they would probably tell you it's probably another 20 years or so, maybe longer, to build out the Anthem at Merrill Ranch project. That's an aerial view of the district, large district. We've got two of them in your case. District number one's the larger district in the blue line there. The yellow, I think that is, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's the mine site. Maybe somebody can remind me. That's state land. That's the state land site right there. That's right. Thank you. So, that was carved out of the district. And then when District number two was formed, in the red line right there, there were certain parcels here that were also carved out. So, a lot of residential development going on in here, as well as over there. And so, development progress is occurring. I'm going to share with you some of the updates that Pulte recently gave us, just to kind of give you a reminder of where we're at with respect to the progress of the development. Wanted to throw this one in. This is from a previous PowerPoint, I think we gave the Board in connection with the issuance of some of the special assessment bonds. This was Unit 17B, and this is pretty much what it looks like when we sell those bonds initially in the early stages of development. So, they're not quite yet built out, but getting into what they call the builder-ready stage, and ready for sale, and ready for closings. Debt profile. Just wanted to indicate on here for each district how much debt is on the land. 3.8 million of GO bonds in District number one, and about $3.5 million of special assessments. And then District number two, we've issued about 4.7 million, I'll round up if you don't mind, of the general obligation bonds, and about 2.9 million of the special assessments for the entracs. We threw this slide in here, maybe this is new this time in terms of what your policy objectives are. Why does the Town have a CFD? And in connection there with, what are kind of your policies, your public policy objectives? And we're glad to, you know, to continue to discuss this. This was a few that came to mind. That growth should pay for itself, and so the growth in Merrill Ranch and the residential development and some of the commercial development that is occurring should pay for itself to the extent possible by the developer, and certainly through the use of the Community Facilities District financing alternative. The regional public infrastructure, as we talked about earlier, fire stations, roadways, open space, parks, that type of thing, generally financed with the general obligation property tax secured bonds. And then the entracs, as we talked about, would be funded with special assessments. And then the other one that goes back really from '04, '05 to current, unless it changes in the future, and that is to have a consistent property tax rate, secondary property tax rate, which in your case is $3.55, as you recall, $3.25 for bond debt service and $0.30 for M&amp;O levy between the two districts. And to my knowledge, I believe the 3.55 has been in place for quite some time up to this point. So, those were, you know, four public policy objectives that we wanted to put in front of you this evening, and there may be others I'm sure that I'm missing. As far as the CFD background is concerned, this is some pretty good information. It's been around for about 23, 24 years. It came over from California and other high-growth states. I would say in number three there, there's probably 13 to 15 cities and towns that utilize CFDs, and we've listed most of them there in your area. Casa Grande, Hazem, Coolidge, Morana, Sarita, Goodyear, Phoenix, Scottsdale, certainly Florence. So, they are being used for primarily master planned communities. There's some other projects I could share with you in a moment that we've used them for. Say that there's probably been about 135 bond transactions over the years. I would say that about two-thirds of them are general obligation bonds, and about a third across the state are the special assessment bonds. And you can see there that they range anywhere from a 200-acre CFD to, in your case, about 6,000 acres. And we're working on one now that's probably going to be about 12,000 acres in another community. So, they kind of range in size, and primarily done for master planned communities, with bond transactions ranging from $25,000 to $50 million. Just depends. As far as the public infrastructure, I was going to turn this over to Mike, but I'm going to spare him of that and just go through it real quickly. This is in the state statute as to what, how bonds, what type of public infrastructure that bonds can pay for in our state, and your typical, typical public infrastructure, as you can see there. Come back to that if you need to. As far as the characteristics, I think we've talked about that. We've got characteristics of the general obligation bonds. We've got characteristic of the special assessment bonds. Maybe one difference that we always like to maybe remind people about, councils about, is that general obligation bonds are not bonds that can be prepaid in advance. That's not the nature of the general obligation ad valorem property tax nature, whether you're a community college, a school district, a city of town, or a CFD. One characteristic about the special assessment bonds that I think you're aware of, that's a nice feature for people that move into the community, is those can be prepaid. And we set up special call provisions, as you know, as an accommodation, and if somebody decides, for whatever reason, they want to repay their special assessment bond, it's frankly quite a bit of an administrative burden on staff, but staff is, and the Town is open to repay that. And I have that emboldened, as you can see, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea. Maybe on number nine, just real quick, because this is relevant to your Town. When we sell special assessment bonds, the process of selling bonds is a very serious business, as you all know. And so, we have some underwriting criteria that we're very careful of, and the Town's underwriting criteria generally on special assessment bonds is to have a value to lien of four to one, and that includes all the improvements that Pulte puts in on the $3,500 per lot. So, we do try to, we do pay a lot of attention to that. So, when we come to you, come to your Board of Directors to approve a bond sale, working closely with staff and bond council and what have you, that we've done our homework in connection with that. So, I think we do a conservative job to make sure that when we issue bonds for the district, that we do so in a manner that's prudent, well thought out, and certainly nothing that's reckless, and do a good job on that front. So, so far, so good on that side of the equation. Let's just talk a little bit about, Pulte gave us some information, and I want to give you kind of a quick summary. We've talked about a lot of this. One, two, and three, and four are what we just described from a master financing plan perspective in place since 2004. The expectations are that the tax rate will be maintained on or around 3.55 per hundred on your property tax for the regional public infrastructure. Bonds are only sold when assessed value will support the issuance of additional bonds. So, as Pulte sells homes, and those homes go on the tax rolls, and your assessed value goes up, the Town, the CFD, issues bonds into that existing tax base to support that additional valuation. That's, so we don't do it in advance of development or anything like that. When the assessed values, and they're going to be coming out in February, February 10th in about two weeks, we will have a preliminary number for District number one and District number two, and Mr. Farina will have that. And as the Town prepares for its 15, 16 budget, it will prepare for a possible issuance of additional bonds, depending upon the growth of assessed valuation, to go ahead and sell a little additional debt to get up to the 3.55 and maintain that 3.55 tax rate. Does that make sense? Wanted to kind of remind you, it's an annual situation based on the value and the development success of Merrill Ranch. And we don't sell bonds every year, as you know, but to the extent that the assessed value allows for additional capacity, then discussions are held in that regard. So, I don't know where it's going to be, and won't know until for about two weeks on that front. So, that's really one, two, and four. And then again, the special assessment bonds, per lot assessment is $3,500 for someone who lives in the district in addition to. In number four, we tried to kind of give an estimate at a $3.25 tax rate on a home worth about $150,000. The annual tax burden, monthly tax burden for the bond tax rate is about $35 per month. The 30 cent operating levy is about $4 per month, to kind of help put you into this, put it into perspective. And the special assessment is about $28 to $30 per month, depending upon the final bond sale. So, that just kind of gives you a reminder of the tax burden, if you will, the assessment burden on each lot within the boundaries of District one and two.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
What was the special assessment out there? The dollar amount on special assessment that somebody could pay off?
$3,500.
$3,500 per lot?
Yes.
So, if somebody wanted to pay that $3,500 off, then they could do that and knock off that $28 a month?
Yes.
To cover their tax bill?
That's close.
Thank you.
I want to make a comment on that, though. You have to remember that the assessment is set at the beginning, you have a year in July, so you have one period, a year period. So, any time you pay off an assessment within that period, you also have to pay off the interest that's related to that.
Yes.
That's why we have a call, maybe in April, that's when we end collecting prepayments that you can pay off in that period of time. So, there is some interest associated with that.
Yes. Good point. Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, Valerie?
Kara.
Kara, I'm sorry. Sorry, Tara.
That's okay. Thanks. I just also wanted to point out that Mike Farina, thank you for making it possible, had moved forward and made sure that the bills that the homeowners are receiving that have these special assessments on it actually has the payoff balance on it of what is owed in previous years that was not on there, and now he's made the proper adjustments.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. I have a question, because I, you know, since I'm sort of new at this, I understand the difference between the two types of bonds. I understand the difference between the two types of bonds, but I don't understand what the criteria is between the two, you know? What are we paying for with the GO bonds versus the special assessments?
Right. Okay, yeah, Mr. Anderson. So, let's go back here. I'll try to answer that, and Mike and Paul can pipe in here. So, the, this here is a recent example of Unit 17B in which special assessment bonds were issued within the, and those bond monies were used for what they call the entrac public infrastructure that benefits that particular lot, primarily water and curb, gutter, streets, public infrastructure that benefits a particular residential lot, not necessarily other people. And so, that's what you pay for, since that's assigned to that particular lot. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Yeah. And then again, on the GO bonds, in your policy, there's a copy here. I ran a copy for you if you want to, you know, read it tonight after the council meeting. And you have a copy in your packet. So, those are for the regional. So, what's defined as regional? Fire stations, everybody benefits from, parkways, roadways, or regional public infrastructure, open space, parks, things of that nature.
And a little more specifically, as far as roadways go, for example, Merrill Ranch Parkway, American Way, Spirit Way, on highway, you know, the major regional type roads, as opposed to the lots that flow through the neighbor, or the streets that flow through the neighborhoods.
Makes sense. That's generally what most cities and towns are doing with the general obligation bonds, property tax secured. Everybody pays their fair share of the regional structure that supports the development.
I have a problem with that, but this is not the time to discuss that, I guess.
Yeah. And that's, we can always, you know, policies can be changed and...
Also, in the feasibility studies that are presented to council for approval for these bond issues on the assessment, it specifically tells you what is going to be paid for. So, you always have the option of referring back to those.
Okay. Very good. Thanks for your patience. Good questions, and let me get back up here to the final, the Pulte project. So, the top part of it really is what we just talked about on the GOs and the special assessments and the property taxes and the burden of that. Number seven, go to number eight. Number eight through really 13 gives you an update of where Pulte is with the project. I know a lot of you live out there, and you live, obviously live in Florence, and you're real familiar with what's going on. But Pulte gave us these numbers just the other day. So, if you go to number eight, CFD number one, Sun City Age Restricted, they've closed 654 units. Sticking with age restricted for a moment, within District number two, about 394 closed units. Okay? And then Parkside in District number one and number two are 418 and 692 respectively. So, number 12 and 13 give you an idea. CFD number one is about 17% built out. They've closed 1,072 homes, and it's zoned, as you all know, for about 6,400 residential units. I mean, that is a lot of units that will take years to build out. That is the larger district, obviously, than the smaller District number two. So, Pulte is suggesting that they're about 17% built out, and on District number two, smaller district, smaller number of planned residential units, about 2,945 at the moment. They've closed about 1,086, so they're about 37% built out. So, interestingly, they're very close between District number one and number two. They're both pretty, pretty close in terms of about 1,100 closed units. Commercial development, probably not progressing as fast as anybody wants. Some commercial development, we know, and we trust that that'll continue over the years. And then number 15 is what I mentioned earlier, that Pulte is obviously very, very committed and significantly invested in the Town. Pulte sent this over, so we thought we would chart it for you. That shows you since inception, kind of the roller coaster that Pulte's been and the community's been under relative to home closings. Obviously, in '07, '08, times were good for all of us here in Arizona, and you can see the number of closings. They came out of the chute very strong, about 469 units in 2007, about 450 in 2008, and then all heck broke loose, as you know. And you can see the spiral down. And then over the last couple of years, it stabilized. It went down, I guess, to a low point of about 129 units. 2013, back up to 182, and 2014, 148, about 150 units. And I believe those are calendar year numbers. So, that's not uncommon with master planned communities we've seen around the state. It's kind of gone through the roller coaster. I guess maybe the good news is, hopefully, we're not down to that 132 number at the low point, or the 129, I guess I should say. So, not out of the woods yet. The economy is still kind of trying to pick up steam, as you all know. The economy is better, but when it comes to residential housing, it hasn't quite, at least in Arizona, picked up to where we'd all like to see it. Okay. Real quick, we know this is important to you. This is District number one on 21 and District number two, and they're very, very close, pretty much the same thing. So, in the far right-hand column, this is the property tax rate with all what they call overlapping municipal jurisdictions in your community, in the Merrill Ranch community. On the right-hand side, Penal County tax rate, this is budget year 14, 15, $4.71. Penal County Community College District, 226. Florence Unified, $7.15. This is operating and bond debt service. We didn't break them out. Community College has bonds, the Florence Unified has bonds. Okay? The VOTEC, Valley Institute of Technology, a nickel. Town of Florence Operating, $1.12. I'm sure that number's familiar to you. And then down, Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District, number one and District number two, $3.55, bond and operating tax rate, for a total of $18.85 per $100 of assessed value. That is the total overlapping secondary and primary tax rate for someone who lives in the boundaries of the district. Now, if you don't live in the boundaries of the district, you take out the 3.55. Makes sense? So, we wanted to kind of give you an update, and we've got some assessed value and some bond, outstanding bond information there for the jurisdictions that have those outstanding. So, we hope that's helpful, maybe as a reminder. We wish it was $10 per 100, but it's 18. That's not uncommon around the state. An 18, a $20 to $21 combined tax rate is kind of the range, some a little lower, some a little higher, but in the ballpark. These are all the financing team members. When you do a bond transaction, a lot of us get involved, a lot of different professionals with different areas of expertise, and you've interacted with most of them, ourselves as the underwriter, district engineer, bond council, Mike and Paul, trustee, CFD administrator, which in your case is your finance staff, your staff. They do a great job.
Go back to that slide on the taxes a minute.
Yeah.
The primary, how is the county or is the state involved in it that the citizens really don't pay that 1885? Isn't there a percentage of that taken off by the state on the primary, on the primary tax? Isn't there a certain amount that they can, that they pay?
Yeah. It's a, it's a, separates secondary, because they don't get involved in secondary.
Right.
But you're right. On the, on the primary tax rate, I want to say it's through what they call a homeowner rebate, and it's a good point, Mayor. It's through a homeowner rebate program. I believe that when the primary tax rate within a municipal jurisdiction, I want to say exceeds $10. Maybe, Michael, or can you help me?
1%.
Yeah. $10. And I can't tell there, because we didn't break out the primary and the secondary, Mayor.
Yeah.
But if the primary exceeds $10, then the state does kick in.
So, the taxpayer is not paying what you're showing right up there?
Yes.
There is some deduction off of that for what the state makes a contribution?
Um...
Or however they do the deduction?
Yeah. In your case, because I'm thinking out loud here, because I know Penal County doesn't have a secondary. Penal County doesn't have any bond, you know, property tax bonds outstanding. So, that is a primary property tax levy. Penal County Community College, there is some bonding in there, so I don't know what that is. Florence, probably there's bonds in there. So, we have to go back and double check yours to be accurate, Mayor, which we can do and report back to staff with. But anything over $10 on the primary combined, there is a homeowner's rebate. I just got to break that out for you.
That's what I thought. I just...
Yeah. Good point. Okay. So far, so good. We went over the participants. These are a bunch of case studies. Festival Ranch in Buckeye has a similar Pulte project, very, very similar to yours. Age restricted, non-age restricted.
Can you explain to them how the election happened and how property tax, at the time that we entered into the CFD that does the election? I have a lot of questions. Can you ask me a question?
I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure. Mayor, Members of the Council, these districts are incredibly easy to form at the early stages, and both these districts, Mark and I were involved in formation, as you mentioned. Basically, all you have to do, believe it or not, is get a petition signed by 100% of the landowners. So, we go out, we find these areas, we double check to make sure there's no one living out there, so you have no registered electors. If there are no registered electors, and you get a petition signed by 100% of all the property owners, so anybody that has a fee interest in the property outright owner, anybody that has a lien on the property, so if there are bank liens or other sorts of liens on the property, anybody leasing or anything like that, all those folks sign a petition, one council meeting, 24 hours' notice, and we can form a district. So, it's very simple to do that. We do hold an election to issue general obligation bonds, because that's required by the Constitution. But the statute says, again, if there's nobody, that's a resident elector, so if there's no folks living out there, then the landowners, again, get to vote on the issuance of general obligation bonds. then the landowners, again, get to vote on the issuance of general obligation bonds. And we actually hold that election. In the case of District number one, Mark can remind me, but I think we have $1.3 billion worth of debt for that district that's been voted.
That's correct.
And for District number two, it's, I think, $100 million, if I remember correctly.
That's correct as well.
The latter number is more common, you know, that you shouldn't let those big numbers scare you. It's just, when you, when you do these things, as, so, so we did it in 2006, as Mark's telling you, maybe 20, 25, 30 years before you build out. So you don't know how much you're going to need, you don't have, you don't know how much inflation's going to affect the cost of things or anything like that. So again, seeing a number like $100 million is, is a pretty common number. The larger number is an aberration that we could talk about historically, but probably isn't worth talking about.
Mike, the, that 1.3 billion, that was an estimate we made back then. Now, that doesn't mean we're going to spend it all. No, no way.
No, and again, you know, there's a little bit of negotiation that goes on there. Some of us, you know, thought that number was too large. But, but again, it's just a number. As the mayor said, the developer in that case decided, if I could finance every single thing with the community facilities districts, with a, with a community facilities district, here's how much we would, I would need. There, there's no way in the world that that could ever happen, though. You're never going to be able to issue 1.3 billion. Guys like Reader and I wish that was the case because we could retire at a younger age. But these things take a lot of time. There are restrictions on, on what the market will allow to be financed. So, so, so again, it, it, they're, they're very simple to form, they're very simple to authorize the debt. We, we try to be very careful and make sure that the mayor and council sit as the governing board of the district so that that can be controlled by the mayor and council sitting as that board. Because again, they're going to be concerned about how it affects not only the folks living out in, in the districts, but also how it relates to the finances of the, of the town.
Can this be dissolved?
Excuse me?
Can this be dissolved?
Mayor, Members of the Council, it, it, there is a statutory provision that allows for dissolution, but it's, it basically is not functional. It, you, you really can't do it. You, you, you've got to have an election and, and, first of all, you can't, you can't do it while debt's outstanding. So right now, you've got debt that goes out to what, 20 or something, 25? So you couldn't do it until the debt was paid off because the property taxes pay the debt. Until debt's paid off, you could, you can't, you can't dissolve the district. You can, you can have an election. It, to even have the election, though, assume all the debt's paid off and assume you want to dissolve the district, the, the town has to accept any financial responsibility of the district once it's dissolved. So any liability for lawsuits or anything else, if there's an action to dissolve, the town's going to end up liable. So we, we just historically have not ever dissolved one of these things. They, and again, Mark, Mark moved through it very quickly. But these, these entities are separate political subdivisions when they're formed. So they, they, they are just like any other governmental entity. They have separate existence. You sit as a separate legislative body. They're subject to all the other state laws that any political subdivision that, that's formed is. So, so again, it would be like trying to dissolve the, the town to some degree. It's not an easy thing to do.
Good.
Okay, Mayor, moving along pretty quick here. These are just case studies that we won't really give you unless you want us to. We've actually done some pretty neat things. This one here, maybe just real quick. This was, City of Scottsdale did a CFD for the, for the mall, Scottsdale Waterfront Mall. And a CFD was formed as part of the development agreement that allowed bonds to be issued once the mall was completed and helped pay for some of the public infrastructure around the mall. More of a commercial-related CFD.
So basically, if you live in a condo there, your, your bonds were issued and the condo associate, the condo owners are paying a property tax to pay for the park.
They're still working on that thing.
Yeah, they will be for a long time.
This is an improvement district down in Morana. Next time you're down on Morana, between Tangerine Road and I-10, Morana. This was done probably in '06 or '07 as a commercial assessment bond, if you will, improvement district bond. Town issued about 25 million in assessment bonds to build that public infrastructure there as a way to entice development. So this is not a CFD, this was a town improvement district. And so just trying to give you an idea of what Morana did and when development, it's been empty for the last seven years, too. So it was, it was a gamble, no bonds of ownership to fall, all the property owners have paid their assessment. And it's now positioned for development, you know, once the economy turns, if it turns. So at any rate, the rest of these really, really, for your perusal, these case studies, in the event they might be helpful for other projects you're working on, we're always glad, as you know, to chat about those. This is the one that I just, I just bought my lot here in Hawaii. Just thought I would throw this in here for some fun. This is actually a CFD in Hawaii that our firm managed. And I'm having quite bought a, bought a lot yet. I think it'll be several years before I can. Okay, the rest of this in your handout is really for you. We're very transparent, as you know, in Appendix A are all the bonds, all the outstanding bonds. All your GOs and all your assessments by district and by type of bond. And you'll see some in here that have some high rates on them. There was a reason for that. And what we're hoping is, and I'm on, in, in Section A here, the first one, for example, the GO bonds that we issued for District number one in 2008, we're hoping at one, at one point, maybe in the next couple of years, to the extent things get worked out and all that, that we can refinance these out. And instead of having the 7.4, maybe it were 5.4, or maybe it were 4.5. So just so you know, we will, over time, as the development occurs and more development success happens and we're able to improve credit ratings and things of that nature, then we'll do our best to refinance bonds out to save money. So I just wanted to let you know that we try to stay on top of this for you and that we'll keep you posted accordingly. Section B is the credit rating reports for each district. If you have any interest in reading that, they're both rated triple B minus, low investment grade. Nothing personal, just early-stage development, if you will, still at, you know, 20% and a third built out. So the good news is, an investment-grade credit rating is very, very good, even though a triple B minus might not sound good. Without getting into a lot of details, it's a, it's a significant step for the development connection with the issuance of bonds that we have an investment-grade credit rating when we go out into the market. And then Section C is your policies, which as Lisa mentioned, you already have a copy of and I don't need to go through. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions. I hope that was helpful, we went quick, but, but hopefully that was, was helpful.
Mark, the other question that council members always ask me is, when Pulte agrees, issuing for them, what happens if they don't vote?
You need to speak into the mic, please, ma'am.
Sir? The other question council members always come in and ask me is, what happens if there's a bond issuance before council and they don't vote in favor of the bond issuance?
Mayor, Members of the Council, you, you have complete legislative authority sitting as the district board to always vote no. So that's, that's in your, your prerogative. Doesn't happen very often. Most of these, most of the time, these things are, are well-planned. And, and we try to make sure, as Ms. Colleen mentioned a minute ago, the part of the process is there's a feasibility report. We try to make sure everybody's on the same, the same, the same sheet of music as we start these things. So there'll be, there'll be a feasibility report repaired. We have to have a hold, hold a, a public hearing on that report, and then the, the bonds are authorized. Again, we try to make sure, working early with staff and the developer, that, you know, there's a, an understanding of what's being financed, you know, why it's necessary in terms of the phasing of the development. But to, to the clerk's question, you always have the, you always have the ability to vote no if you're not in favor of the issuance of... Where that would leave Pulte is that they would have to either decide whether they wanted to fund that infrastructure on their own or figure out some way to maybe decrease the, the rapidity at which they're developing or the quality of the development. Most of the developers will tell you that, that, and, and, and most will tell you, and most will live up to it, Pulte is definitely one of the types of developers that will live up to it. The reason they like to use these districts is that it allows them to, to, to put in better quality infrastructure more quickly than they would otherwise do if they were doing the development, the development themselves. The, the reason they can do that is that, and again, we're really getting into a lot of detail here, but the reason they can do that is that when money is borrowed through a district, it's borrowed at a lower interest rate than what Pulte can borrow itself. The, the, the nature of the bonds that Mark described. And, and again, we went through a lot of technical terms, so if you guys have questions, you want to talk about it, we're glad to do that. A bond is nothing more than a loan. It's, it's just a fancy term for a loan. But when a governmental entity borrows money, the interest on that bar of money is exempt from federal income taxation. So that allows the districts that we form to borrow money at a lower interest rate. Hopefully, Pulte has been able to use that lower-cost money to put infrastructure into the project more quickly and to put it in at a better quality than the other one. So, so again, you, you always have the, the authority to, the ability to vote no. But we can't guarantee that it might not affect how Pulte approaches the project when they, when they, when they continue with the development. And, and as Mark said, I think it's important to remember that we work for you guys. We're not here at the behest of Pulte. So I've been working for the Town of Florence, the mayor had a full head of hair when I started working here. It's been that long ago.
So did we.
And yours was brown.
So, so again, we work for you, so please don't take that as me supporting the developer. I'm just trying to be honest with you in terms of what's likely to happen. But we're here to do what you want us to do in, in the context of both these community, these community facilities districts and as, and in terms of your, your traditional financing down through the town.
But it appears to me that, that, two things. One, that we are subsidizing Pulte and that the homeowners are paying back Pulte's loan.
Again, Mayor and Council, it, it's a, a policy question. I think it's one the developers should probably address with you guys. But, but again, the logic for these things is that, again, it, it makes for a better development. You know, these, these are things that the developer will tell you that they're better able to do because they can use a district. They don't have to go borrow the money, therefore, they, they can put in...
I, I understand, it's a great advantage for the...
And again, I, again, I, I don't want to take their side. I'm just, since they're not here, I'm just playing devil's advocate. But this is very common to, to big mixed-use master plan communities in Arizona. If you want, you, Mark and I could go through a list. I mean, it started with Tatum Ranch back in the eighties, DC Ranch in Scottsdale, you know, the, the DMB projects, all the DMB projects use them. So Verado, DC Ranch, the, the Vistancia projects in Peoria, if you're familiar with that project, all the Trilogy projects out there. So they're, they're very common. And it, again, for the developers to be competitive, they believe they need this advantage. And again, I'm not here to, to support that position or not.
Yeah, I understand that.
But it, but it is the case. I mean, it is, they are, it's tax-exempt, off-the-sheet, off-balance-sheet financing that, that is available to them to, to do the kinds of things they're doing.
And if Mr. Anderson, Councilman May, these projects are not unique to Arizona. I mean, all the builders do this nationwide in every state. And, and if Pulte was here, you know, Dan Bono would say, it would impede growth. And for those communities that aren't willing to do that, to assist with development and growth, they'll go to another community that will, because that's what they'll do. And they do that nationwide.
The other, the other argument is, and again, it can get real technical, but the other argument that they would ask you to think about is that there's two ways they can do this. They can charge you more for your home, and they can put that cost in your mortgage. And for purposes of the mortgage, you can deduct, as you probably know, the interest cost on your mortgage. Your property taxes are fully deductible, though. So you're better off paying, and people hate when you hear this, but you're better off, in this case, paying a little bit more in property taxes than having a larger mortgage. And so there is some advantage, and again, each person needs to look at it individually and see how it affects them. But there is theoretically some advantages have, opposed to having this as opposed to a higher-priced home. Now, unfortunately, what goes along with that is it's very difficult for a, a Pulte or a Shea or any of these entities to tell you what they were charged for a home if the district wasn't in place. They're going to, they're going to charge whatever the market would dare. But that's another argument that goes into this, the fact that you can deduct property taxes and you can deduct the interest on special assessments and that, that should be an advantage for the individual. I don't think I'm selling you, though. I have a feeling you're, you're not buying.
I'm not buying it, but, you know, yeah, I understand. But, you know, if we look around our, our community here, we have the Pulte, the large development, but we have a lot of small subdivisions around town that got put in the old-fashioned way.
Right.
You know, the developer went in and funded it, built the houses and sold them.
Yeah, and I was, I did, to reinforce what the mayor, what the manager said, I, I worked in Texas, I've worked in California. And again, these things are, and Mark showed you this project from Hawaii. We're seeing more of this, not less of it. It's just kind of the, the nature of things, so.
Yeah, oh, I, I understand. If I were a developer, I'd go for this. This is, this is the best of all worlds. He could just, he gets his financing done, and why not go for it? You know, it's good business. But as a homeowner, I, I think I'm paying for this several times.
Yeah, this usually happens on big, bigger tracks. Doesn't happen on a small, twenty, thirty, thirty-unit development. It happens on a bigger track.
That's a good point, Mayor, Members of the Council.
Bigger scale.
Yeah, there, there are, you know, I think, and, and Mark might want to talk, talk about numbers, but if you're not borrowing several million dollars through one of these things, it typically doesn't make sense. And they typically don't make sense if you're just putting in, say, streets and no amenities. You know, straight streets, you know, with, with minimal curb gutter, sidewalk and, you know, streetlights. These things are typically used, as I mentioned earlier, big mixed-use master plan communities. We've got, you've got residential, hopefully you've got some commercial, recreational amenities, that sort of stuff. That's where we see them most of the time. Now, you know, during the, during the heyday, early, or late eighties, early nineties, there were some smaller projects that used them, but they weren't used very effectively. You know, and frankly, to be honest with you, and again, I'm not trying to sell it, you know, but the two projects that are most active right now in Arizona in terms of development that, that I hear mentioned most often are Merrill, Anthony Merrill Ranch and Festival Ranch out in Buckeye. And they both have community facilities districts and seem to have used them most, most successfully. I don't know if that's an overstatement, but they're...
Vistancia?
Yeah, Vistancia to a certain degree, again, another CFD, so.
I was going to add something on that. I was wondering, did you have a question?
I do. I just, I was seeking clarification on something. When I was reading through the, the packet, it said mandatory in reference to the district. The district board must dissolve the district if, and it goes through criteria. But the third one I was wondering about because it says, "The district board adopts and records a resolution dissolving the district. The district board may call such an election on its own and must call an election if petitioned to do so by 10% of the qualified electors of the district." So I just wanted clarification on that last one. Who are the qualified electors? Is that the voters or...
Mayor, Members of the Council, that, that, those are registered electors. So it's anybody that shows up on, just like when you voted in the election in November, they look at that voter list, and if you're, if you're a registered voter, you get to vote. You don't have to own real estate or anything else. It's, it's the registered electors. Now, I don't, I'm not sure what you're looking at exactly in terms of the, is there something?
For everybody else, it's on page 10, and it was talking about the district board. And it said, it was, "The district board must dissolve the district if," and then it goes through three different scenarios. And the third one, you know, just prompted me into questioning because I didn't exactly know what it meant.
That's, that's the case. That's what I was describing earlier. So again, you have to hold the election. But you, you, the district will stay in place as long as there's debt outstanding. So you can't, to the extent there are property tax debt outstanding, that, that has to stay in place. I, I need to double-check this, make sure it's still, the statute still reads the same. This may be old, I drafted it, it's on my fault, but, but yeah, that, that's who gets to vote. So, and that's who get, that, that's who would sign the petition as well.
Okay, let me, let me see if I can go in. Let's just say, per se, that there was, the, the, the board would have to call for the election. The citizens upraised, and they, here they come to the board and say, "We want to get rid of this CFD." Then it goes to the board to say, "Okay, we're going to go to a voter, not of the registered voters within that area." But the whole basis, where it all boils down to, somebody still owes that money. And that liability falls back on the town, right?
You cannot dissolve the district while the bonds are still outstanding. So if you, if you look at the schedule, I don't know if Mark can flip back for you, but you'll notice that some of the GO bonds are outstanding until 2025.
Right.
So you can't, you couldn't, 2030, your finance director's correcting me here, 2030. So you couldn't even think about doing it until 2030. That's the first thing. Look at the, the first bullet point was what I was referring to earlier, which is typically the non-starter, which means that the town would have to agree to be liable for any obligations of the district after all the bonds were paid off. So suppose something happened, you have a, you have a faulty roadway or something else that the, that the district should be liable for came up. district should be liable for came up, the town would have to agree to accept liability for that. And most towns just don't want to do that. They're not going to, but the real issue, I don't know if Mark got back to you on that, the real issue is you can't do this till the bonds are all paid off.
The, and again, there, if you go with that, say that District One, we got through with it and everything, we decided to dissolve District One, and they did have that big problem. Then it falls on District Two, the citizens of District Two, the citizens here, after the bonds, after the GOs are paid off.
Yeah. Again, if anything went wrong...
But anything in that district, after the GO bond is paid off, then it also becomes responsibility to the town.
Right.
Not to the, not to the property owner themselves, it comes over the whole blanket of the town.
Right.
Including the other district if they haven't paid off.
It would, it would be everybody. Again, and that's the condition on which this statute was passed. They wanted to make sure somebody was going to be there to hold the bag at the end. Now, what would it be? I don't know, but most municipalities that have looked at this, and this statute was drafted, I was involved with it frankly, was drafted because they had a situation out in Surprise where they formed a huge district. The district never issued bonds, so it was sort of ripe for dissolution because it just, the problem was it kept showing up on Tyler reports and it bothered people. So they said, "Okay, we want to get rid of this district." So in that case, it was just a matter of the city of Surprise agreeing to accept responsibility for anything that would happen once the district was dissolved. Because again, they didn't have debt outstanding like these. The city decided not to do it, so.
Now, you were talking about the GO bonds also covering the water?
I think Mark said that, but...
Well, you guys don't have your, you don't have your water away.
That's what I was wondering what you were talking about.
In your case, it's been streets and curb and gutter and...
Yeah, for the assessments, it's almost been exclusively curb gutter and sidewalk.
Right.
Mostly the real hardscape out there, some street lighting maybe, landscaping maybe, but it's really been, it's been the curb gutter. It's the, it's the stuff that runs right in front of your house, basically.
Any accountability from the developer when he comes in and says, "I need, you know, ten million dollars for this?"
Oh, yeah. No, absolutely. The feasibility report covers that. There's a district engineer that monitors everything that's being built. All of it's subject to public procurement, so it's all, yeah, there, there's a real thorough process that's, that's used to both vet, vet what's going to be built and then to make sure there's careful controls as it's being built to make sure it's built properly, money's properly spent, all those sort of things. Did that answer your question? I hope so. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Council, I'd like to add, some of the questions we receive over the phone from homeowners in the CFDs, and maybe you receive them as well, is, you know, these, the property taxes collected and the special assessments that are collected are spent in any which way the town wants to. No, we're, we have to spend the money according to the feasibility reports. The feasibility reports are what says how much is going to be borrowed, how much is going to be in improvements, and it actually specifies the particular improvements that the CFD and the taxes and special assessments that are collected on must be paid on. When we are paying the developer, out from the proceeds, we have to get a report from the engineer saying this is in fact, this is, these are the invoices substantiating the particular improvements before we even cut a check back to the developer from the proceeds of the debt. Another question that we receive is on the assessments particularly is, "I was never told about this." We're required by state statute and our requirements that it is disclosed when you are purchasing a home. I remember I bought a home in Anthem, and I remember that disclosure report that we had to read and sign that we read it disclosing the $3,500 assessment. So it's not something, it does surprise some homeowners for whatever reason, but it is disclosed at the time of the home sale. So I just wanted, you know, those, I just wanted to let, you know, some of the questions that we get, we answer them, but not, you know, I just wanted to put that out there for you as well, that that's, those are some of the questions that we get, common questions.
And Mayor, Council, if I may add to the law also, what Mike said, the Pulte may come to us with a list of items that they need for additional bonding capacity through their engineers, and then our district engineer, which is our Public Works Director and our Finance Director and our legal team through Mike Cafiso and then Mark Reeder, go through all of the guidelines to make sure those are adequate and they are actually needed and for the price and what they are. Then those go back and they are publicized, as Mike said. So there is a thorough review of everything that goes through and requested.
Streetlights, I heard that brought up.
I, you notice I hesitated, Mayor, when I said that, because I'm getting old and...
I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember if they're included in the GO or the special assessment.
Those are slits, aren't they?
Huh?
Streetlight improvement districts.
Oh, you got slits in there?
Do we have improvement district out there?
Yeah, streetlight improvement district.
And that is how much a year per, to the homeowner? Because everyone listens up there on the taxes.
Right now, in the streetlight improvement districts, there is no, we do not have a levy on the streetlight improvement districts because the fund balance is built up quite a bit and, you know, just, just as an estimate, how much fund balance, I think you even asked the question here in the levy process was, you know, it's quite a number of years before that fund balance we drawn down to where we would, again, come back with actual levy.
Are the residents notified of that when they buy their home that they are in a streetlight improvement district?
Mayor, members of the council, it, what finance sector brought up, it's not included there, but it is reported, included in the public report from the Real Estate Department. So that's another piece of paper among all the paper you get at the, at the closing, but I'm pretty sure that the streetlight improvement district is mentioned in that public report.
Well, I guess the reason I was asking that because, say, it happens in 20 years and I'm still mayor, God forbid, but I don't want to have those people coming and chewing on me not knowing that they had bought where that was. Now, John, you're probably the same way, that you wouldn't want them coming knocking on your door every night.
Well, yeah, I'm still concerned about the GO bonds because if we talk about GO bonds and we're paying for Hunt Highway, said Merrill Ranch, Miracle Way, are both districts paying for that equally? How does that get allocated?
Well, the, Mayor, members of the council, the property tax is based on the value of the property, so, so everybody pays the same tax rate within both districts. That's the aspiration. And they, because it's two different political subdivisions, over time, we may have trouble keeping them at the same rate, but the property tax is, is based on the value of the individual, the individual property. So that's how it's apportioned. Unlike the special assessment, which is $3,500 a lot, your annual tax bill is based on the value of your property. The phasing, if you will, of those roadways is based on the need as the project develops. And again, that's, that's at the discretion of the district board to the extent you want to do the financing. So as they get further into a given area, more of Merrill Ranch Parkway will be built, more of American Way, more Spirit Way. It's just what's, what's needed as the development occurs.
I guess what John's asking is who's paying for it right now? Which district is paying for those roads?
Uh...
I can't remember where the, it appears that District Two is paying for the majority of it.
Yeah. But, but Mayor members of the council, there are enough other things in District Number One that are allowing a tax rate to be levied in the same amount as in District Number Two.
Okay.
Remember, this is one of the challenges we had when we formed the two districts was being concerned that people are not going to consider themselves living in District One or District Two, they're going to consider themselves living in Anthem and Merrill Ranch, and we were hoping over time we could keep the rates the same. That'll be driven ultimately by what each borrows and what the values of the properties are as opposed to our desire for what the tax rate should be.
You know, one of my concerns is the most expensive road we have out there is Hunt Highway. That's benefit, you know, everybody gets a benefit from that.
Yeah. And Mayor members of the council, we haven't, we've talked about this with staff informally. There's no reason, for instance, and I'm not, certainly not espousing that tonight, but there's no reason why, the roadway doesn't have to be located within the district or the boundaries of the district to be financed by the district. So it's possible for District One to finance portions of Hunt Highway and District Number Two if that became necessary or vice versa.
Can we take it out?
What's that?
Can we take Hunt Highway out and have it financed by the town or something like that if we want to do it?
Sure, you can if you can find another source. It's just, it's difficult in these days, in these days to find.
Yeah, it sounds like going forward, what, what we need to do maybe, and maybe what Pulte frankly needs to do, is a better job of describing where the bond money's going.
Fair, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Because people aren't quite clear with respect to what they're paying for, and that's a, that's a very fair question. And the last thing I was going to say, and then we'll wrap up the study session, if I could use a recent meeting I was at with respect to CFDs. I think CFDs can be an incredibly powerful tool for a city or town, kind of like what we discussed. But they're not 100% without controversy because people don't really understand them and all that. But I think if they're done the right way, they can be a very, very good tool, a win-win for the citizens and a win-win for the community. Okay? And if I can give you just a quick analogy, at a meeting I was at recently with the city of Buckeye. Buckeye has, I think, eight community facilities districts that are fairly active. All the growth, all the growth back in '07, if you remember, everybody was heading out, if you remember the phrase, "Drive till you qualify." Remember that phrase? So as, as the economy was, was taking off, you know, everybody was going west, you know, and east and so forth and so on. So Buckeye formed eight of these. And we went to a meeting, we were selling $20 million of bonds for, for a community that basically was able to sell $20 million in bonds because of a significant amount of commercial development that finally came out to Buckeye. It took, kind of reminds me of Merrill Ranch a little bit in the sense that it took Buckeye 12, 12 years plus to get the commercial property along I-10 and Watson Road out there, if you know where that is. And so it finally came, and Lowe's and Home Depot came, and they had the tax base, as we talked about before. Tax base grew significantly, guess what? They had 20 million in capacity. So to make a long story short, this was for a particular district that had a checkered, I would say of all their districts, a district in which the developers, and there were, this was not necessarily a significant master plan community driven by one big master plan builder like, say, a Pulte, but there were a number of home builders in there. And I think it got off to a rocky start, and I think people moved in and they, they didn't have a very good feel for what they were paying for, and it got off to a bad start, kind of along the lines of what you were saying, Mr. Anderson. Very, very, very fair question. And so over the years, this district has had kind of a checkered reputation, lack of better term. So whenever we issue bonds for that particular CFD, it's, I would say, controversial, unfortunately controversial, and people show up and they're not generally happy. So at this meeting, the council members that live in that district said, "I'm just going to tell you, I'm going to vote for this, but I, I'm not real crazy about doing this bond right now. The people I represent in my community are not happy, and I just, I just don't really care for it." And he was honest and he was transparent. So during the course of the meeting, there was two other district CFDs, two council members lived in CFDs. One is DMB, which is the Verado project, if you know where that is, out of the old Caterpillar Improving Grounds, done by DMB, master plan community, quality developer, does a quality project. And that council member said that we love CFDs, they have been very good for our community, they don't have any controversy when they sell bonds, the citizens show up and encourage the council to vote yes. Why is that? They do a very good job communicating with their, with their constituents, if you will, their customers, that they're getting a good bang for their buck on their property taxes and their assessments. Another council member got up and says, "I live in Festival Ranch." That's the one that Mike referred to, the big Pulte project out in Festival Ranch. Same thing. The people out there understand that they're getting a public infrastructure, enhanced public infrastructure, a nicer development, and they're willing to pay their GO bond, tax rate, and their assessment. So I just wanted to share that with you from my perspective and working in this space a lot, is I think they can be a disaster, but I think they can be a very good economic tool if, if things are communicated properly. And so I think going forward, what we pledge for you all is that, that we make it very, very clear what the public infrastructure is going for, make people feel better about what they're paying for. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
I think what we're looking at is education of the person moving into the area who lives in a district.
Yes.
And being able to answer their questions. Because we're not going to please everybody all the time. I mean, they're just, I would love to be able to do that, but just give them the opportunity to have the information they need to make their own decision, I think is very important. And maybe it'll stop some of it. Some of us not. I mean, there's no way that we're going to stop all the controversy over CFD because different people moving from different areas that have never been involved in or whatever. I can tell you from when we did this, I mean, and working with Harrison Merrill, that wasn't a fun and tight games. But if you take a look at the big picture, would we have Pulte if we didn't have CFDs? That's a big deal. Guarantee you right now, folks, we wouldn't have. They would have not have come to Florence, Arizona if they wouldn't have been able to work out something to make their investment and get their money out of it. That's just the way it is, in my opinion. I don't think we would have. Is there any more on the CFDs to Mike or Mark? Okay, they need to get out of here because they're going back to Phoenix. We're going to take a 10-minute recess.
Thank you. Call the meeting back to order.
Our next item is item number B, Rules, Council's Rules of Procedures and Possible Amendments. After each election, we go through with the council to look at their rules of procedures and possible amendments to those rules of procedures. This is council's opportunity, this is council's opportunity to make sure the meetings are running the way that they would like to see them run. So what I've done is I've gone in and I've provided an update of what we changed two years ago, so we can go through those to make sure that they are still working properly. And then I've also highlighted in green anything that one or more member of council has come to me to question about why it is the way that we do things the way we do things. And so if you have discussions on them and you want them changed, now is the time to bring it up. If you like the way that things are go, just, we'll just proceed, and we'll go quickly through these. I'll just let you know what we changed last time, and then we'll let you know what people are questioning, and then if you have any other topics that you want to be brought up, we'll discuss those as well. So last year, we changed parliamentarian. The parliamentarian used to be the chair of the boards and commissions, and we found out that that was not working out. And council is very much educated in open meeting law and how meetings run, and so the council does now act as parliamentarian for the boards and commission. Regular meetings, we excluded the December as a regular meeting, and we only have one meeting in December now pursuant to our new rules. With the elections laws changing, this no longer works for us because we do have to canvass, so we'll find that in the back in green as an area that does not work. Regular meetings, we added a moment of silence or an invocation at the regular meetings. I've had council members approach me to let me know that they do not like the current way that we do that, so we'll discuss that later as well. Special meeting, adding a second call to the public. One member of council did approach us to say that they'd like to have only one call to the council and that they would like all people to do a speaker card, whether they do it before or after. Again, that's entirely up to council. Roll call attendance, we removed it and allow for people to miss meetings without having to have a motion to excuse them. Recession breaks, we now allow for any member of council to go through and call for a break. So is there any questions about the areas that we adopted yesterday, last year, two years ago, besides the ones that I brought up that council has questioned? Okay, then we'll go then.
On the, on the moment of silence and the prayer invocation, I've had several citizens come to me and say they thought that was supposed to be non-denominational, and so they were wondering, you know, if at the end they just say amen instead of saying, "In the name of Jesus Christ," or some particular person, if we could just hold it to an amen or something like that.
It's very hard when you invite people in to pray to curtail the way that they pray. There was a court ruling last June that said that you can be denominational when you speak in front of a council. So people are allowed to call out to however they feel they, they did a freedom of religion. I can get you the case, case study on that. But if council wants to choose to make it non-denominational, denation, non-denominational, then what I need to do is, what do we do when they get up and pray and off the top of their head they just say, "In Jesus' name we pray," or "In Christ's name we pray," or "In whosoever's name we pray"? Because I'm not really going to go to them and scold them after the meeting and say, "You prayed wrong." So it's, it's difficult to have a balance unless people are just doing what council asks them to do. Do I remove them from a list and say, "You can never pray in front of council again"? Right now, what we do is we have a policy in place that we're going to discuss later, Right now, what we do is we have a policy in place that we're gonna discuss later, but I'll go ahead and discuss it now too, so we can have everything all rolled up in one. We have a policy that allows for anyone who is, has an organized religion pursuant to IRS organization be able to come in and have the ability to pray. We did a list to where we called everyone off of the list and said, "Would you like to come in and would you like to do this?" We had people show up, we had people not show up. Then we were waiting for the court ruling, and then Mayor Rankin went to having council members, calling on council members to pray. In the meantime, recently, we've gone to one person that we're calling in, and he is the chaplain. So if we wanna go with just having our police chaplain come in and do the prayer pursuant to the way we ask him to do it, then that would be lovely too. However council wants this to turn out is what we wanna do.
Okay. Well, so my way of understanding it is the courts have decided that freedom of religion, they can, I mean, it's okay to do that then, I mean, say whatever.
Yes.
Okay.
But we, we did our chaplain, and we could direct him how or not how to do it, right?
Correct.
Okay. Then on the call to the public, the, I think that we ought to stick with the, as close as we can to the three minutes, and I, and if, if they haven't filled out a, a, a paper, that's for the first call to the public. At the end of the meeting, they don't have a paper filled out, so at that time, I think it would be all right to say, "Does anybody in the public have anything to say?", rather than at the end of our first call to the public saying, "People that don't have, didn't, didn't fill anything out, letting them come up." I think we ought to hold that to the end of the meeting. That way, we're not holding up the meeting for everybody else that came to the meeting. And if somebody has something to say that, that didn't fill out the, the request, they could wait until the end of the meeting for their call to the public. I think, I think it'd move the meetings along a little bit.
I think, I'd like to address that. The, when we talk about transparency in government.
Right.
Stopping anybody from speaking in either call to the public. Yeah, the, the letters, the forms that we ask them to fill out, that's fine. But I think if anybody is sitting there that didn't wanna fill out a form, but doesn't wanna speak to the council, has that right to speak. That, that's just the way I feel about it. You know, I, you know, that's just me. I, I think that if anybody's sitting in this room, and they didn't fill out a paper, but they wanted to say something, I, I have no problem listening to it. As far as the three minutes, we've been pretty, I think we've been sticking to that pretty good. They'll go over, some people go over a little bit. I try to, to keep it to the three minutes if we can. There are some issues that, that they bring up, points that I think that we do need to listen to. But again, we don't let them go way over that three minutes. We may have had one or two go over, I'm not sure, but most I'm stick at three minutes. But I think, you know, filling out a piece of paper, to me, and I don't know the reason for filling it out to begin with, you know, I, unless it's for the clerk's office to have the record of who spoke, but it's on our, it's on our records in the tape.
It's so that we can properly spell names for the address, and in case of public hearings, we can properly say, and a lot of times people go up to the microphone and they don't even say their name into the microphone, and they talk. So that's one of the things that we try to do.
I will, I can correct them on that. You know, we can make sure that they speak their name.
The point I'm making here is, at the beginning of the meeting, they can fill out the paperwork. We'll go through that. Then we move on with the meeting. At the end of the meeting, if they haven't filled out paperwork and they wanna speak, they can do it at that time. That way, we're not holding everybody up at the beginning of the meeting, drawing the meeting out longer by just letting anybody get up, because, you know, you know, you gotta have, you gotta have some uniformity. I mean, so, you know, they'll have their opportunity at the end of the meeting, so I don't see where we're, you know, why we wanna draw out the beginning of the meeting.
Well, I would think that you're right, Councilman Hawkins, that at the beginning of the meeting, people should know what they wanna talk about, right? But after the meeting goes on, you know, something comes up and they say, "Oh, I wanna, I wanna talk about that, I wanna, you know, I wanna say something about it." So I think definitely, second call to the meeting, they shouldn't have to be required to have a, fill out a form.
The, the thing about it is, what you've seen, if you've noticed, Lisa sometimes, during the first call to the public, will be continuously bringing up slips over to us to pull up. Even during when the people are speaking, other people will fill out their slip, they decide they wanna say something, so they have to run back there and get a slip, bring it up to Lisa, Lisa has to get it up to me for that. I mean, I think we're wasting our, you know, we're wasting more time that way, and more staff that, I, I, you know, I, I mean, however you guys wanna go with it, I'll go with it, but I think in the best interest of the people, that if they come here and they wanna talk, that they should be able to talk, and whether they fill out a slip or not. That's just my opinion.
Well, there again, you know, it, we've got the rule, I think we ought to stick to it, you know, it, whatever.
I know in the training that they had recently from the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, they discussed the issue of call to the public, and one issue they brought up was it's not necessarily needed during the hearing because the meeting is supposed to be conducted with observation from the community, not participation. And I know you're talking about transparency, but they said it's up to the council to decide if they wanna even have a call to the public, whether it's one or two, but at least if we are gonna have it, we should recognize and identify them by name for documentation. I hate to have my name misspelled and it occurs. So if it's at least written down on the sheet, it's corrected. But I know you wanna look at transparency and allow people to talk to the meetings, but we do it at the beginning, and it seems like the one we do at the end is an opportunity for them to release their anger, and that's what we get a lot of it. Or they just wanna show support, but they're not giving us any additional information as far as what's important to each agenda item they bring up.
And I look at it this way, on the second call to the public. I, I give, I give, let them have the opportunity to say yea or nay on things that we've discussed during the meeting. Let them have their say. Again, it's a people's right to be, be heard, in my opinion. They have every right in the world to stand up here and say, "You did a good job tonight," or "We don't like what you did." And have to do it, and they should be able to do it in public, at a, at an open council meeting like that.
We're not arguing them being able to get up and talk about, you know, we're, we're staying there, have call to the public. At the beginning of the meeting, they need to write it down and request it. At the, if, if they don't, at the end of the meeting, they can get up and talk about whatever they want. That way, if there's people here that need to go on, you know, that have been here for, you know, the whole meeting, they, they might wanna go on, you know, rather than us just letting people get up and get up and get up at the beginning of the meeting, you know. I'm just trying to be efficient here, that's all I'm trying to do. You know, and, and we're being very transparent. We're not, I'm not talking about not letting anybody speak. I'm just saying, at the beginning of the meeting, I think they should fill out the paper. If they don't, they can speak at the end of the meeting.
Councilmember Tanya is correct. A call to the public is up to an individual council's choice whether they have it or not. In the town of Florence, what we currently have is we have two calls to the publics on a regular meeting. On a work session, we do not allow call to the public, and on a special meeting, we only have call to the public at the end of the meeting. So that's, that's what the rules are as they stand.
And I think we should stick to them, filling out the paperwork, and that's it, at the beginning of the meeting. And at the end, if they wanna get up, then that's the time to get up without filling one out, I guess.
The rules are currently in place, so your recommendations are to that of the mayor. That does not show any, any changes to the policy that need to occur. That is meeting management.
But does the rule allow them to speak without filling out a paper?
Under, underneath the rules right now, we say that you should fill out a speaker request form, but the mayor controls the meeting, so if the mayor calls up and says that someone can speak without, if the mayor opens the floors to allow people to speak during an action item, then the mayor has the right to do that because he is controlling the meeting. If you all want him to act in a certain way, of course, that he's gonna do that based on his comments and your recommendations.
Well, if the mayor can control it, then I don't know why we have the rule. That's...
We, we do have the rule, but during the meeting, if the mayor chooses to let someone talk, then that's part of meeting management, and that's out of the control of staff. What we do is we write the rules and then staff enforces the rules, but there are certain things that we do not, we cannot enforce, nor do we enforce. And if things occur, if someone was not allowing someone to speak that turned in a meeting card, then of course we would have to get involved. But if you're being more lenient to your citizens and you're siding on the, you're making the decision based on the best outcome for the citizen, you're giving them more participation rights, then staff can't come in and say, "We're doing something wrong" because the only thing we've done is we've allowed someone to speak that wanted the opportunity to speak. If we were stopping them from speaking at any point, we would definitely say, "We have to allow everyone to speak. It's our rule that every person gets their right to three minutes." That's the only rule we have. Every person gets a right to three minutes. So with this...
I don't see any change, need to change anything on that myself.
Okay, then we will move on. Under section four, point one.
I wanted to go back on the, on the rule dealing with the prayer.
Okay, sir.
Okay, so the prayer talked about the opportunity for either a moment of silence or to have somebody come up. Are we required to do the actual prayer, or can we just stay with a moment of silence?
We can change it to a complete moment of silence and allow everyone their own right to do that, most definitely. It's however the council chooses.
And that's what I'd like to see we do.
Okay. Do we have, does everyone wanna see it changed to a moment of silence?
I do.
Instead of the prayer?
Instead of the prayer? So that is...
Sounds good.
...consensus. I'm going to make that adjustment, and I'll bring it to you for an action at a later date.
Can I ask reasoning why? I think it seems that...
It just solves a lot of problems.
It was always a problem that we had to find somebody.
What problems, Bill, let me ask you, what problems have come up from it?
Well, sometimes we have some clergymen here, sometimes we don't. Just to simplify it, make it easier, and there's, there's no fuss, no muss, nobody can complain, just have a moment of silence.
I agree. Then everybody could pray as they like.
Just keeps everything a lot cleaner and, and a lot to the point.
Well, you know, we started out, when we talked about this, we were worried about, we weren't worried about the, at the time we started, that we were worried about the terminology on it, about what you could actually say. Then the Supreme Court came down with a ruling that allowed you to have prayer. This is a Christian nation, and at that time, we had decided that if a Muslim wanted to come in and pray, they were gonna be able to. We were worried about some of the smaller religions, that's why we went to the religions with IRS standing, is to keep some of the, I wanna say, minor religions out, so they, that we wanted that. Am I a real religious man? No. Do I believe in God? Yes. Do I believe this country was founded on Christian religion? Yes. And I don't see anything wrong with praying. I, I, I don't see anything wrong about asking somebody to stand up and say a few words over us, for us. I, I have no problem with that, and I don't think any, that the majority of the people in town of Florence have that problem. That's just my opinion, I, I...
I think that a prayer is a highly personal thing.
Right.
Every person that's here has a belief of their own in a higher power.
Right.
Or their own belief. I believe that each of us should pray in silence, and it has the same effect as a group prayer. If the public sees you offering a moment of silence, they know that each of us are reflecting in our own way how we would like to pray. That's the way I feel about it.
I agree.
You know, I, I guess, I, I guess, you know, whatever you guys want, that's fine. I'll go along with it. I, I, I don't like it, I'll be very honest with you, but that's what we're all here for, is to, to discuss and discuss it. The, as long as this United States of America is a Christian nation, and we go to different events where they have prayer, at different openings, there's a lot of openings in your paternal organizations so far as that, I'm for it. But if, if, if the rest of the council wants the moment silent, if the majority of you want that, I, I have no problem with doing that.
I, I wouldn't say that the United States is a Christian nation. The United States believe in the First Amendment rights, which is any religion.
That's right.
And there's so many religions out there, whether it's Christianity, Muslim, Rastafara, or any other kind. There's so many out there now, you can't keep track of, that have been identified by the U.S. Supreme Court. And if they identify it, then the idea is, everybody has a right to pray their own way.
And I, Reuben, I have no qualms in what you say. I don't care what the, the Supreme Court says. The United States was founded on freedom, of freedom of religion, and it was mainly on the Church of England is where it came from. That's where the, mainly the religion of the United States started. So it's, it's a Christian religion, that's my opinion, and I, and I'm not gonna change it. But I see so much of this stuff that we're changing in the United States right now, where we don't even have President's Day at the White House and stuff like that, but you can do Muslim prayer at the White House, but you can't have anything about Christian? I'm sorry, but Tom Rankin's not gonna stand, I, I, I'm just me, but I do believe that this is a Christian nation, and the majority of the people in this country are, are Christians.
Okay, next item on the topic for tonight is regular meetings. We have in there, highlighted in green, it's on page three of 29, excluding the last meeting in December. I would like to remove excluding the last meeting in December and go back to having meetings in December so that we can swear in our council and keep working. We can look, if council wants to go dark on a day, we can look for another day that would work better. Before, we could not do June because obviously the budget, we're right in budget meetings. That was requested last time. We can look at possibly an August date, or we can look at just having meeting dates, and if we end up not having items before that agenda, we can cancel them as necessary. But in the sake of getting things done timely, it is important that we have our standing meeting.
My opinion is, we were elected to represent the town of Florence, not ourselves. We all knew that there was two meetings a month that we were gonna have. When this came up two years ago, when everybody wanted to get a vacation meeting, we already found this year in December, how many meetings did we have?
Three.
We had three meetings in December. One of them was on the second, called the second regular thing. We're elected for, and there's nothing that says how many meetings that we have to have, as far as, as I know, we do it mainly for, make sure that we're able to keep the government running. But we're elected for, you only have to be here for two meetings, so why eliminate one? I think that we should have, we should go back to the two meetings per month, 12 months a year, and stick with it.
Okay, those changes will be made and brought forward. The next item I have highlighted is special meetings. We had questions from council, why it takes three members to be able to call a special meeting. Our rules are, is that the mayor can call a meeting, the manager can call a meeting, or three members of council can call a meeting. Just making sure we're still okay.
I have a problem with that, because if I understand it right, if I wanna call a special meeting, I've gotta get two people to agree with me.
That's correct, sir. Under the background rules.
No.
Or the mayor.
Or the mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, that says that I've gotta start polling members, and I'm gonna violate the Open Meeting Act.
You don't have to poll members, because polling members is finding out how they feel about something. You have to say, "Can we have a special meeting on this date to discuss this topic?"
Well, but that topic is very...
Well, but that topic is very specific.
Yes.
I'm asking them for their approval.
Yeah, okay.
Well, but you're, John, you're not polling the majority, you're only polling three of you. And if you remember, you can discuss something with two other members of the council without getting into that, into that polling position.
Yeah, but if I call Councilman Hawkins first, and he says, "No, I, I don't agree with you." And I call the next councilman, yeah? So I could go through the whole council, trying to get somebody to agree with me.
We're going to have to find out about that.
But, you know, I, you know, I just say, let's reduce it to two people, isn't it?
I'll get a legal on it.
Let's, let's find out from Frida about that. That's an interesting question. I wish that had been brought up in the executive session the other day.
But, well, how about going to two people? Anybody object to that?
Whatever you want, your council ran. I have no issues with it, and we write it up that way, and then those are the rules that we follow.
I support that.
I'd like to have a legal opinion on how much I brought up first people.
Instead of three council members to put something on an agenda, two council members in an effort not to violate open meeting law.
Well, let's find out if it takes, I mean, if that is a violation first. And then if it is, then we might look at that, but-
We'll, we'll get a legal, and when we bring it back, you guys can just simply make a slight modification to the policy by amending it to be two or three people. And we will write that in the way that you want it on the floor. The next item is work-
Let me go on. Has there been a time that a councilperson approached me that you're aware of that I didn't, and they had a need that we haven't had a meeting?
Um, there has been, yes, sir.
Has it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I couldn't remember.
Yes, there has been.
And, but when we've had three people, when you've been told by three different people that we have a meeting, we've always had-
We've always posted a meeting. Um, work sessions. The highlighted part in green is something that was added. Council members have contacted me to say, "Why do we have them, some work sessions on a Wednesday? Why do we have them on a Thursday? Why are they sporadic? They need a certain date on their calendar so that they can have it clear to know that if we're having a date, that's the date we're having the meeting." And so we added in, the work sessions will be held on the second and the fifth Monday. That would mean that council knows that always on a Monday would be your meeting, so it wouldn't be a surprise as to how you were going to handle your personal affairs.
Can we change that from fifth to fourth? Because that's what I always thought. You know, that's how we always communicated it, was it was the second and fourth.
That would be only if, the work sessions would only occur if they were necessary.
Mayor, council, if I may. Last year, I believe, there were at least three or four occasions where we had to schedule work sessions on a Thursday or Friday because of pending legal action or some other reason. So that's why we could not stick to those dates and times. So I, so I just want to make sure you all knew that there were some things going on there.
Those, when there's something that comes up that's important, means that it's so important, we need action. That is a special meeting. Special meetings occur within twenty-four hours notice of a special meeting. A work session is something like today, where we are prepping to come in and discuss something with you and educate you on something particular. There's no emergency behind it. It is educational purposes. Or like the RAD contracts, we had three or four different meetings where we could sit down, where we were going through the RAD contracts, to discuss how, how were we going to do this endeavor? And so that's where the work sessions would come in. Special meetings, we already said last year that if we call a special meeting because we need to have action by the council, that even if we have less than a quorum, if we, even if we have just a quorum of four present, that we would proceed. And that's what we have been doing.
I think I'd change the terminology on that to any Monday other than a regular scheduled meeting Monday.
Okay.
Because, you're right, because there are times we have, you know, two, four, four or five. And that would cover it, just eliminate that one.
All right, perfect. We'll make that change. Okay. Um, minutes of council meeting, I did not make any changes, nor was I requested on anything. Notices and agendas, there's not been anything changed.
I do have one question on five point three with distribution of notices and agendas.
Yes.
I know the language in the first one, five point three, says not less than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. But then in seven point three, it references, you know, the council will have the agenda and the documents by Thursday, which is seventy-two hours.
Notice of the agenda is a legal requirement. That's when the law states you must post the agenda. That has to be twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, or you cannot have the materials. Say we were doing a work session, and we were, or we were doing a meeting, and it's, we're going to strive to get out those materials to council seventy-two hours prior to the meeting. But we may not post the agenda for the public until twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, to make sure that we are legally sound.
Okay, because the way I was reading it, it says the town council shall ensure that the mayor and town council receive copies.
That's the mayor and town council.
Of all?
So that means the Friday before a meeting, you are receiving.
Right, but in seven point three, it references that we'll have it seventy-two hours before the meeting.
The seventy-two hours means that you're receiving it by Friday before the meeting. If we had an emergency session and we had to post something on, I could come in on a Sunday prior to seven o'clock, and I can post an addendum to that meeting, as long as it's twenty-four hours prior to the meeting.
Okay, but it also in seven point three says by Thursday, seventy-two hours before the-
Yes, I know.
So that's where the conflict is.
Sometimes I can't give them, we can change it to whatever, but you have to understand, sometimes I don't have the materials from the department head, or the manager's still reviewing the materials on Thursday, and I barely get those materials when I'm packaging them out. And so our goal is to give them to you seventy-two hours prior to. Council requests that we changed it last, last year or the year before, and make it at least by Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday of each week. We have tried to do that. We have not succeeded in most meetings. Because, not because the clerk's office is, is falling behind on their areas, but because we do not have the packaged material in our hands to even be able to process.
Tell your department heads to plan ahead.
I think seventy-two hours is, is plenty of time to study the agenda, myself. I've never had any problems. I mean, that's three days, that's, if you can't comprehend it in three days, there's-
When our town manager came in, he pushed down, back the deadlines. So I have the deadlines back a whole extra week prior to the meetings being able to go out. You would think I would be able to process them a week earlier. But I cannot, because if I don't have those materials, and it's of such importance that the manager wants it on the agenda, my packets hold until the manager releases those agendas.
Councilmember Walters, a mayor, council. And examples are like the last two meetings in December. There were legal documents on there that we were required to give from APS or from ADOT that we don't get to the last absolute minute.
See, and those are understandable, but just, you know, in the bulk, looking at it, having it ahead of time helps, especially with the ability to go in and ask questions ahead of time to clarify just something minor that could end up.
It's always my goal to provide them. I would love to provide them to you as early as possible. And if I was provided all my materials to be able to get to you, I could release them as soon as Tuesday afternoon.
That-
It's just that it does not happen for me. And I feel bad, because I feel like it's my despondment's responsibility to get them out. And I feel like I'm failing, providing council what they have requested, yet at the same time, I get frustrated at the same time, because I do not have my materials. And I've said to people, "I cannot go to the floor and give, have a work session, have a meeting, have anything with council unless I give them the backup material." And, and that is what we're striving to do, is give you the proper backup material so that you can study and that you can be ready. We'll have a meeting with our staff, we'll discuss it again, and we will keep working on it.
Well, I'm just wondering if any of the other council members have had a problem with the seventy-two hours?
You know, when I was on planning the zoning, I'll say that, uh, we-
If we get it, if we get it by Friday morning, is, is-
We got our packets early, and there was two different times where we found a mistake. We got it corrected before the, before the posting. So it was an advantage of getting the agenda before the posting.
Two, two years ago, when I asked for it to be provided on Thursday, that was the biggest issue, was that when you, when you received the packet, if you got it on Friday and you reviewed it on the weekends, there were times when there were some issues that was incorrect. So you can't go back on Monday and say, "Hey, there's some things that are incorrect. We need to change it," because now you're within the twenty-four hours, or an amendment that needed to be adapted.
All materials can be amended, only the agenda cannot be amended.
True.
So we can go in and we can amend things. And our staff has, I can go back and look at the statistics, but eighty percent of the packets were released by the Thursday. It's just the Wednesday date we're not hitting.
Thursday was the good date.
Yeah.
I didn't have any issues with Thursday.
Yeah, we are, we are hitting eighty percent of the packets on Thursday. We're calling council on Thursday to letting them know that their packets are available. And it's council's choice when and if they come in to pick them up. A lot of council members review them online. They're online Thursday, and they're readily available. If we do paper packets, we do have a statement online saying paper packets only, so people know that they have to come in and see them.
And Thursday's a day that I liked.
Okay.
Because it gave us Friday to at least to review it and make any remarks or comments.
All right, I will adjust them to make sure that they are consistent. I do need to leave in the twenty-four hour language to be able to give me the ability to change anything pursuant to the law so that we can still legally move forward. Does that work with everyone?
I don't have any problem with the way you're running it right now. I think, yeah, I think it's great, the way it's operating right now. I don't see any problem with-
I think right now, most of the time, we get them on Thursday.
We, we try. We, we try.
No, and the way that we have it, it was just worded two different ways in the two different sections.
We will make sure, yeah, we will do that. We'll do the agenda one way and the packet another way.
Perfect.
Um, the other area that I wanted to make sure, on set four point seven, where it talks about convenience packets, um, I'm not real comfortable with this wording remaining in about the convenience packets, because what we have is, we have an ability for citizens to be able to go in and request for a notification when they receive a packet. Even when we send it out, if we send it out to homeowners association via the email, there are not always forwarding that to their, people that are part of their homeowners association. So people come back to the Town of Florence and say, "Why didn't we get that courtesy notice? It's per your policy." I would like to tell people that they have the ability to register on the town's website and receive email notifications. And that way, when they come in, they ask a question to us, we can merely go back to IT and say, "Your email's on there, and it was distributed at this day at this time, so you should have gotten it." As long as they are registered, they will receive it. So with your permission, I'll make that slight change.
Sounds good.
Just long as we don't eliminate anybody by that.
Oh, no. We don't eliminate anybody right now receives it. When they receive it as a courtesy, they receive it electronically. Distribution of notices and agendas, we've clarified that. The moment of silence, we've clarified that. Call to the public, we have, I believe, clarified that and are ready to move on. Roll call for attendance, I believe everybody's still comfortable with the fact that you can miss, and we're not going to do a motion for an excuse. Six point seven. Okay, so, um, schedule appearances. What it is, is I wanted to make sure that everybody is aware that a written request shall be submitted to the town clerk for review of the town manager, not less than seven days prior to the town council meeting. This at least gives me one day before it goes to staff to add something to the agenda. We talked about liquor licenses and the fact that we were doing ratifications of liquor license on a later meeting. And Mayor Rankin had talked to me about it and said he wants to make sure all of those come before the council. So what I did was make sure that they have a seven-day window. If their event is within seven days and they come to me at seven days, I will have to be denying them or calling an emergency meeting. We discussed calling an emergency meeting for those to make sure that they had the proper council authority prior to moving forward. And so we did adjust that from fourteen days to seven days for the public to get on the agenda. Is that okay with everyone? Okay.
Well, I, I have a problem with the, the town manager, his designated handling administratively, or will require the town council discussion. It says that we're giving the town manager the authority to decide whether or not somebody gets to speak.
Well, the rules of the council are, is that someone may come and speak if it is underneath the authority of the council. So items that are not underneath the authority of the council, it's hard to have it on the agenda for an action item. So say somebody was coming and they were talking about something that was in the jurisdiction of the county. What we would do is say, "Thank you for your request, but you need to go speak before Pinal County Board of Supervisors, because it's not underneath the jurisdiction or control of the town council."
I was turned down tw- twice.
To speak?
To speak, yes.
You were turned down twice to speak on parking issues that were not, I wish Jim Minato was here, because he could speak. But what I recall is that you were turned down twice to speak on parking issue, and that there was Arizona state statutes that didn't give the Town of Florence authority, is what I was told, the reason why you were turned down.
No, what I wanted to talk about was the PUD. But anyway.
Oh, I was told it was parking issues, and that we didn't have it on our authority to do parking.
Yeah, I know that, but, uh, the PUD, uh, talks about, uh, the, uh, streets have to allow two-lane traffic. And, uh, I wasn't allowed to talk about that. Nor was allowed to talk about the, uh, the, uh, pool, the water park.
Well, if council wants to change that, you could let me know now, and I could come up with some draft language, and I could write something for your-
I would, you know, I would say that, you know, something to the fact that if the, if the citizen is not satisfied with the administrative response, because there could be real good reasons why, you know, the, the manager could go talk to the citizen and says, "Look, here's the situation," and they say, "Oh, okay. I'm satisfied with that answer." But if, but if he, you know, if they want to bring up something to the council that is within the, the authority of the council, of course, I think they ought to be able to do it.
I, I do want to tell you that when a citizen comes before us, we do tell them that they have a right to go before a call to the public at a council. And at that time, council has the authority to direct staff to put an item on the agenda. If you were not told that, I apologize, because that is what we tell everyone, including in the meetings of every single council meeting.
Yeah, I was told that, but on the pool thing, I had a presentation I wanted to give. It was more than three minutes long, and so I didn't get to give it.
And Mr. Anderson, mayor council, if I may, on that one, I believe, you know, Mr. Minato at that time, because you were also running for council at the time, I believe he felt that there was a concern that every then candidate running for council would have to have that period of time. And I think that was the concern with Mr. Minato on that one, because you were a candidate for council.
No, what I was told.
Does, if I add the statements that are currently on the agenda, that if anyone is not satisfied with the manager's response, that they may appear before town council and speak at call to the public? Would that suffice, since council has the authority to put something on a future agenda date?
Well-
I mean, that's a way to-
That's, that's all right, just believe you like it here.
Figure out how to get that before them to be able to do that. Okay.
And, and the citizen also has a right to go to a council member or two to request that they ask to be put on the agenda, and not take, and that we could override the manager as far as getting an agenda item on it. So there's two ways really. You go call the public, or you go to your council people and ask them. And if they, and if they agree with you, that they think it's big enough, they can go on the agenda. The manager or the clerk will have to put it on the agenda. Documentation for it will have to be presented to them to get it into the packets, so we know what they're going to be talking about.
Okay, um, the next item in green is seven point three, packets. The Thursday and the seventy-two hour prior were highlighted. We've discussed that, we are correcting that. Item six, item six is just a reminder, because we always seem to have problems on this. Item- Item six on page number fourteen. It's, "Any council member may call for a previous question on any issue under debate. The call for a previous question must receive a second and then receive at least two-thirds of a vote." So, that's what our current rules are. When somebody calls for a call to the question, the mayor simply says, "Do we have a second?" If they have a second, it is voted on right then and there. And then, if it fails, the discussions keep going. But if it is called, I call for, I call for the previous question, then mayor says immediately, "Do I have a second?" Somebody makes a second or does not make a second. If they do not make a second, it fails. And if they do make a second, it goes to an immediate vote and then we go forward.
What is a call for a previous question?
It means basically that council feels that the issue's been discussed enough and they want to vote. That's what it means. And so, that's what's in there. Sometimes we do a call for a question and sometimes we don't hear the call for a question, because we'll have multiple people talking. Other times, we hear the call for a question and we'll just stop everything and vote on it when there's no second. Other times, you know, it just depends. So, that's just a good reminder that that's in the rules. It's written that way and that way, we handle each one the same way consistently.
Why the word "pre-" "previous," I don't know.
That's what threw me.
I don't know what that dictates to, because a previous question means it was already called for before.
That's what...
It's a typographical error, so it'll be removed.
Okay, so, call for the question.
Call for the question. And now, we're moving and grooving. There's a couple pages that I don't have questions on. I apologize, I'm taking so long. Regular scheduled and unscheduled board and commission meetings. We're adding the arts and culture commission, so that will be a change. And we're seeking council's authority to dissolve the redevelopment commission and have the council be the redevelopment commission. It would be much like the board of adjustments, where in the event that is needed, council will adjourn into the redevelopment commission, or just like council adjourns into the board of adjustment. The reason why that is, is because we don't have business pending before that board. They don't have any items. And in the last three years, they've been used for various things that aren't related to redevelopment commission. And so, rather than to have people on that don't feel fulfilled by their duties, we would like to be able to dissolve that board and commission and have council act in that capacity. We did get prior authorization from Jim Minato to say that it was fine. I will go through and put through a legal question to our new attorneys to make sure that it doesn't violate any state statutes in doing so, because we do want to definitely have the ability to have redevelopment district available to us if it's so needed.
I just wish we would've had business for the redevelopment commission, because we had a whole bunch of good people. Even Wilbur back there sat on it and didn't ever get called about nothing. But redevelopment commission can be a very useful tool. And it takes, in my opinion, it takes citizens of the community to be sitting there, but why do you ask them to be sitting there if there's nothing, if we're not doing anything? Can we develop some way that we have something that goes to the redevelopment commission? I mean, what actually institute beginning a discussion with redevelopment commission?
We have a redevelopment plan that was adopted that says what items need to go to a redevelopment district. If we have one, what would happen is, is that if we did something like that, we would put that before council to serve in that capacity.
Hey, when I'm asking about who's been served, I said, "What do we need to go, what starts something in the redevelopment commission?"
What needs to be redeveloped?
I mean, we know that.
Maybe I can speak to this. I did serve as a redevelopment commission liaison for a couple of years. What you have is, the other commissions that the town has, the P and Z, HDAC, these commissions have authority. HDAC has authority for sign permits, for demolition permits. P and Z, as you know, has a number of different authorities with regards to adoption of plans and so forth, plaits. There's nothing, there's no town business or application or permit or anything else that goes before the redevelopment commission that they need to act on to move town business forward. So, that was the one thing, that there's no standing responsibility of redevelopment commission with regards to town operations, like HDAC and P and Z and the other boards and commissions that we have. It's a challenge. When I first took over redevelopment commission, Mr. Freeman was the chair, and we talked about it more than a few times, as far as what responsibilities the redevelopment commission has. And eight years later, we're still talking about it.
Mayor Council, if I may, there is absolutely, at this time, no active projects or areas of town for redevelopment. Therefore, there is no purpose for this committee at this time. At some point in the near future, if we come across something in the downtown area that needs to be redeveloped, an entire block or those type of things, then there will be active activity for this committee to do. But at this point in time, there's not.
All right, section fifteen...
Well, one other question. IDA isn't on this.
IDA is, and per Arizona state statute, you appoint them, but they are not your board and commission.
It's the weirdest damn statute there is.
What did I say?
Can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
What happens is, is that they're underneath, so what happens is, is the only thing that council can really do is appoint or remove members of the IDA, plus you vote on bond issuance before the IDA. The IDA is actually a corporation in and of itself, and it's, I'm losing my thought process and I can't think of the name. The Arizona Corporation Commission is who the IDA is responsible to and responsible, they have to go in and they have to file annual reports, they have to file their names of their officers, they have to file minutes of their annual meetings with that particular board, not with the Town of Florence.
However, if I may, add a little bit more to that. The council, the previous council went ahead and started commiserating with the IDA to get additional information from the IDA, so as far as what, where the money's going, what they're doing with it in the town, how it's benefiting the town. And in return, the town council sits and approves bonds issues for the IDA that comes forward, and council just want to know where that money went.
Good, thank you.
I think the other thing, John, that, as Lisa said, we can appoint the members. We don't remove them, though. I've never heard of us removing any member from the IDA.
I have to look up the statute again.
I don't think we can. I think we just appoint.
You can remove for cause, yes. That is in the guidelines.
For cause?
Yes.
But I've never heard of it. We had never done it. And they serve their five years, I believe, is six, is it six years, six-year terms, if I follow that.
Next is five point two, just wanted to point...
What did you want to do about the arts and culture commission?
You've already, you've already adopted an ordinance adding the arts and culture commission, so I just need to add that into your policy to be consistent with the ordinance that you adopted. And then, of course, you'll be having our standing meeting day resolution brought before you, and that will pick the date that each board and commission meets, and we will post that for the public. So, you will have one item of business coming before you for this, picking standard dates. Right now, the arts commission does not have a quorum yet, so they are not meeting. But prior to that happening, we'll have that resolution before council. Appointments of board and commissions, we did appointments this year. There were not more seats available than applications that we had, so we did not do the appointing committee. We went in and had mayor make a recommendation to the council, and the council went ahead and selected to do that. That's how we'll be proceeding. If there's not more seats than people for the, as soon as we have more seats, more people than seats, we will do the appointing committee. The next item is, we have people who want to serve on more than one board and commission. It has been councils, discussions with me saying they would like people to only serve on one board or commission, so I would like to remove this, so that when people come in and say, "Why do I, why can't I serve on this when it's available in your policies?" That our policies match our philosophies on how we are conducting business. So, with your permission, I will remove that. Everyone's in agreement?
No problems.
Okay, we'll remove.
Can we talk about D there, Lisa?
We are talking about item D. Okay, last issue on boards and commissions really is, well, I've got two more actually. Residency requirements. It says, "Members ceasing to be a Florence resident." I do have an issue where I have a Florence person who was a member of Florence that is currently not a member of Florence, but inside of the annexation area that we believe is going to be annexed into Florence. We are holding that application and not removing that person from the, from board at this time. If that annexation fails, that person will be removed from the board. If the annexation is successful, then they just live within our jurisdiction.
Now, here's my question. Were there other applicants who did live in the Florence at this time?
That position is up for consideration, but there have not been, we have two positions available on that, and we are lacking applications.
I know an individual who did apply back in July, when they did the next one later on. He wasn't called back, but his application was in.
Anyone who put in an application either received a letter saying they're appointed or they were not appointed. We usually appoint everyone.
We had one that was not appointed.
Can you provide me his name, so I can look that up? It would've went to council.
David Linderholm.
Spell that.
For the Parks and Rec, L-I-N-D-E-R-H-O-L-M. I think there were two applicants that went before and he was not chosen for the one position.
I will look it up and see if both, still, if we made a recommendation, if the Parks and Rec Board made a recommendation, both applications would've went to council with a recommendation, because council has the right to change their mind. I will go back and I will look that up, and I'll report back. So, we are holding council. It's council's rule, it's not a state rule, that people have to live within the jurisdiction. When I first started working here, people were allowed to live without, outside the jurisdiction, underneath the library advisory board right now, because it's a joint use policy. They are allowed to live in the district boundaries. So, it is going to be something that we are going to have to look at changing, because the library will no longer be a school library. The library's now going to be a Town of Florence library. So, if we want those districts changed, then what I need to do is, I need to bring back an ordinance that amends those rules. Would you like me to do the ordinance that amends those rules to make them within the decided boundaries of the city limits?
Yes.
Okay.
Or I think that, anyway, I don't know who else.
We will do that. Alternatives, alternates. We're hit and miss on alternates. There's some theories people get on that's alternates, and then they go to all the meetings. They learn about what's happening and then they never get called upon to serve. And it's, do you still want to have alternates? And do we want to be appointing alternates to the various board of commissions? It's not, the rules are not written in such a way to where an alternate steps in and serves in the case of an absence of a member. It is only if a vacancy on the board exists, does that alternate move in without a council appointment.
Are the alternates allowed to participate in the meeting and discussions?
Excuse me?
Are the alternates allowed to participate in the meeting?
Alternates are, if the board chooses to have them have input as a citizen, they are really just a citizen that goes to the meetings to learn. They are not a member of that board, they are not a member of that quorum. If there's not a quorum present, that person cannot fill in to make a quorum, and that person cannot vote until he's officially sworn in as an active member of the board due to vacancy.
Then it really amounts to, is if you've got a person that's really interested in the board or commission, and there's no positions open, is allow him to, just a title of alternate, to attend and learn and observe and show his interest in the position when it does become open.
Do they encourage people to...
I think it did. We've added a couple alternates to, you remember which?
We had alternates, two alternates on planning and zoning, and it was back in the time when we were doing a lot of PUDs, a lot of amendments to the general plan, and time was of an essence to be able to get the development through the process, that if someone fell off and they went out, that we did not have to go through the application process and we could just put someone back in, so that we always had a quorum. Underneath boards and commissions, if you miss three consecutive meetings, then you're automatically removed from a boards and commission. So, at that time, there were people who were removed and there were people who were moved in, so that we could still continue to do business.
It's kind of like the farm team. You're sitting there waiting for somebody to get hurt on the major leagues, and you bring them up, you bring up the rookie.
Are most of our committees pretty stable, as far as our members?
We have been stable and we have not had any business that has been of an urgency since probably 2000, and what would you say, just 2008? And so, it just depends on if we want to continue to allow people to sit at, as an alternate for just in case, or if we want to say that we are willing to take a month and select new members of boards. We can leave it for a later date. I will go back and what I'll do is, before we make our decision, I'll provide a notice to you on how many alternates we currently have. And I'll also provide a notice of how your department heads feel about having alternates on their committee. That could be helpful. Code of ethics, just to go over the fact we have a code of ethics. Everyone has signed off on it. Conduct of members and respecting the process. A lot of times, council members come in and tell me, "This and this happened with another council member, this and this happened with another council member." It's very important that all members of council understand that staff is not the authority, that we, we do not police what happens amongst council members. Council members police what happens amongst themselves. And so, if something's not going the way you feel it should be going, if something is not, someone's not acting the way that you feel that they're acting, then it's up to council to do something with that and to make sure that council discusses that and council acts on it. Staff cannot act on anything. We are your staff and we work for you, but we do not supervise you, nor do we discipline. And so, that's just a very important point that we make.
I have a question on the conflict of interest. If we're, if a council member is, their husband, wife, or cousin, or the way it reads, a relative, or, you know, somebody in the family is working for the town and we're voting on something to do with their department, is that a conflict of interest for that individual?
I would suggest that if a council member felt that they had a conflict of interest, that they get a legal in writing. I'm not a town attorney, nor is any member here tonight, an attorney that can speak to conflict of interest. But we can say that, definitely put it in writing, definitely get a written letter from your attorney, because it not only protects the Florence public image, but it protects you individually. If you feel you have a conflict, that somebody's later going to say, "I think you have a conflict, why did you vote?" You can pull out a legal piece of paper that says, "This says I had the right to vote and I was acting as, underneath my powers of a council member to vote."
And that is per agenda item, correct?
That is per agenda item. And if you have a conflict to vote and you feel that you have a conflict, you can always go on during that, that you can say, "I have a conflict of interest, I'm declaring a conflict of interest," and you can step off of the stage, have a seat in the audience, not participate in discussion, and then as soon as that is over, you can take the stage again. It depends on how you feel about it, but I would definitely say get a legal.
Now, isn't there also something dealing with a conflict of interest, that if there are more than two or three that are on the council, that they can still vote? If there's more than two or three members who have a conflict?
In rural communities, there have been that exact topic that were brought up, and because so many of the members of quorum of council had a conflict of interest on voting, on that they were allowed to vote. But again, they got a legal that told them that they were allowed to vote, and they issued out that legal to the press to say, "This is the reason why we vote," because it is public perception. Public perception, are we doing the right thing? Public perception, are we declaring our conflicts of interest? Public perception. So, we always want to make sure that we're giving a solid public perception on what it is that we're doing in government. on what it is that we're doing in government.
Well, that's... The reason I'm asking this, you know, of course Tara, I'm sure she's, you know, figured it out. I mean, it's...
Well, we have council member Tara that has a family member that's employed by the town. We have council member Guleen that has a family member that is employed by the town.
Okay, I didn't know about her, but...
They would be, it would be, they would get legals from the attorney that would tell them what they were able to do.
I got a granddaughter that works for the town, too.
Okay. But all I'm saying is how many, how many times will we vote on these different departments on, you know, their wages and all this?
We can have an executive session to go over conflict of interest with our attorneys and you guys can ask them very specific questions and they will be able to answer that. I can add that to the February 2nd meeting if you like.
Okay, because you're saying at this point, that person would have to declare their self in a conflict of interest. If they don't declare their self, they just go along and then the public looks at it and the public goes, well...
I will add it to the second meeting in December, or December, February. Make sure everyone has your, I'm tired, guys. Make sure everyone has your questions ready for conflict of interest. And on the second meeting in February, we will add this as an agenda item and we will discuss it. Anyone who feels that they need a legal will get individual legals for each member and what they are wanting to discuss and make sure whether they can or cannot vote. And then that will be perfect.
I'm just trying to keep...
Your attorneys are there to assist you, to help you and protect you. So it's always good that we use them. Compliance and enforcement, we already went over this. Council is the compliance and enforcers. And basically, that's our first item done. Yay. Administrative section of the town code, I just provided it to you as backup material because as we were talking, I said, "This ordinance is going to have to change. This ordinance is going to have to change." So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go back in, make these adjustments and make ordinance changes to the actual code to make sure that they are compliant. And then I'm going to write a resolution that is going to nullify your invocation policy because you will be going to a moment of silence, which means that your policy on invocations will no longer be good. And so we'll be doing that. Last but not least, we are going to have council pictures from 5:00 to 6:00 on February 2nd. I would like everybody to be beautiful, be ready to smile for the camera. And we're going to do individual pictures as well as group pictures. And I need bio updates and I need bios for our new council members.
What date was that?
February 2nd, the next council meeting. Come beautiful. We're going to take pictures. Five o'clock.
Did you get my bio?
Five o'clock?
Five to six o'clock, we're going to do pictures. Okay?
Five to six, pictures?
And what I'm doing is five to six is going to be pictures. I'm posting to the public that council pictures are being conducted on the agenda from 5:00 to 6:00, starting the meeting at 5:00 because I'm going to have a quorum present. And then I'm saying that the regular meeting is starting at 6:00, posting right on your council agenda. So the public will be notified that the time starts at 6:00. But if they choose to come watch you get your picture taken, they can come and watch you get your picture taken.
I thought we had the, beside what we, are we going to have an executive session, too? Is it going to be after or before the meeting?
You are having your executive session after. It's going to be council, Charles, myself, and there will not be an attorney present because you are going to be discussing in executive session what you want to do with your attorney position. And with that, I have nothing else if no one has anything else of me.
Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Any other discussion? All papers taken by by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.